All right, good evening. I'm going to bring the hearing to order. And those of you who are in line, go ahead and continue standing in line and getting signed up. But I need you all to listen pretty carefully about what we're doing here tonight. We are reaching, going to reach capacity in this room at some point. So I'm going to let you know that as you testify, I'm going to ask you to be after you testify, so that other people can come in and have a chance to do so if we are at a point where we've reached capacity. So please be respectful and I appreciate your cooperation. My name is Vicki Walker. I am the Director of the Department of State Lands. That is the hearing you are here for today. We do not represent FERC. We do not represent DEQ or any other state agency. You are here today for the Department of State Lands. If you want to testify about something else, this probably isn't the hearing for you because this is the removal fill permit application for Jordan Coe. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit. So basically, we're having this hearing tonight. This is the second one, so my voice is a little hoarse. We were in Clamath Falls last night. And so we're giving you the opportunity here. And what you are doing is helping provide my staff and me with information about how to move forward on this application. If there are issues that come up today that my staff thinks that we need to have the applicant Jordan Coe address, we will move those questions forward as we review the application. All of your comments are important to us. Every single comment you make today is going to be recorded when you come up to the table and your comments will be taken into consideration. I'm going to review some ground rules pretty soon. But right now, I just want to talk to you a little bit about what it is that you're here testifying on, so that you have a clear understanding. The removal fill permit process helps us, the Department of State Lands, protect Oregon's water resources. Projects that propose to remove or fill material in waters and wetlands are required to obtain a removal fill permit. Anyone that does that sort of work, a farmer, a business, anyone who wants to remove or fill, must get a permit from us. This is certainly one of our largest permit requests. The proposed Jordan Coe Energy Project is proposing removal fill activities and must obtain that permit. The DSL permit is one of multiple approvals, authorizations, and permits that this project is required to obtain from Oregon government and agencies. So this is not the end of the road for the applicant. There are many, many hoops for them to go through. The removal fill permit focuses specifically on those potential impacts of removing and filling materials in waters and wetlands. The public review comment period, as I said, is a time for you to evaluate and talk about the project's effects on you, your family, your home, your community. It's a time for you to talk about whether the proposed mitigation that the applicant has proposed for this project is sufficient enough to offset any anticipated effects that you see that may be harmful or beneficial to you and your family and your community. The proposed project is also required to obtain authorizations from the Department of State Lands for a variety of project components, not just removal fill. There will be further applications for easements for bridges, pipelines, river crossings, stormwater outflows, crossings on state-owned land, leasing and registration for WORF certification and day abilities, authorizations and easements for litigation sites, and a sand and gravel license for the proposed access channel. That's a lot of stuff. So tonight, we're just dealing with one issue, and that's the removal fill permit. Comment opportunities for all of those other things I mentioned will come later than the hearing. And when those applications come forward, then we will be addressing those comment periods. If you want to know more about that, please visit our table in the back with my staff and they will be able to answer those questions for you. So let's talk about the purpose of tonight's hearing. We're trying to provide a safe, productive forum for you to comment on this application. We hope to hear from as many speakers as possible before the hearing ends at 8:00 p.m. and it will in, hopefully, at 8:00 p.m. I'm too old to stay that late anymore, I've got to tell you folks. So, and my staff work all day, so we will close at 8:00 p.m. Our ability to get through all of the comments and to conduct an effective public comment hearing tonight depends on everyone's cooperation and commitment to engage respectfully. So I need all of those ground rules because I'm, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to be pretty strict about those ground rules. I'm a grandmother. I've got a three-year-old and a five-year-old, little boys, and they push the envelope all the time. They get timeouts when they misbehave. And then they get to come back, quiet please, then they get to come back and start playing again. In this case, your timeout will be a permanent timeout and you'll be let out of the room. So please be respectful. So around the room... If you object, sir, you can find another place to be. Around the room, you will see the rules posted, so that if you lose track of that, you can take a look at the signs. I'm going to go over those, and if you have any questions, I'll answer them. So you sign up to speak. Sign-up sheets are available in the back. Be respectful of each other and of my staff and of any other staff. Silence your cell phones. This is a great time for you all to check your cell phones. Make sure they're on mute or vibrate. Let's just not have any phone ringing because that really disrupts someone's testimony. Signs, banners, placards, wags, any of those things are not allowed in the hearing room. If those are shown, you will be taken outside. Please, all that stuff is for you to have outside. Wait, I'll take questions and be answered. Your comments will be limited to two minutes. I'm sorry that there's a lot of you here. We can't have you take more than two minutes. Anne here will be showing you the one minute time remaining, and then she'll show you the reverse side, who says time is up.
Probably a hundred thousand people, a thousand people outside, who are not going to get in.
I'm sorry, sir.
I'm sorry too. Keep going.
Thank you. Being a respectful audience member, that is not respectful. I can't, I can't have them. We cannot have interruptions in our hearing today. If you want to show support for a speaker or no support, you can put your hands and do this. I'm sorry, I can't raise my arms right now. You can do that. Thank you. I just can't have you clapping and I can't have you booing or anything like that because we'll shut the hearing down. We have to be able to hear what everyone has to say. Do not engage in any intimidating or disruptive behavior. I don't expect that you will do that. We didn't see that last night. We won't see it tonight. You're all here for a good and higher purpose, which is to give your testimony today. All of the demonstrations will be outside. We are hosting these meetings to accept your comments in person. However, because we consider all comments, whether they're in person or by paper, Anne has a comment form, a yellow comment form, you can leave that in the back of the room or you can leave it with us. All of that is given the same date. So if we have to close the hearing, you will still have an opportunity to provide your information by email or any other means. Many of you are neighbors. Remember that. Be kind and respectful. Now I'm going to go over the procedure for providing spoken comments. On the sign-up sheet, we ask people to self-identify if you are 65 or older or disabled. It's not to point you out, it's so that you can be given priority in the speaking order. It's important to respect our elders and they will be allowed to go first. Those individuals will have priority numbers and will provide those to us when they come up here. I will call people up in the order they are signed up. Last night it was five, but here we've got six chairs and they're all hooked together. So we're going to call up eight people at a time. Six will sit here on deck and two will sit here to testify. One person will testify at a time, and you'll have two minutes. And that person will then exit the room because, as you've heard, there are over a thousand people out there that want to speak. Please do not miss your turn. If your name is called, you don't have to go sign up again. We just don't have time to look for you if you have left the room. All testimony will be recorded, as I mentioned. If you change your mind, you're tired of waiting, you need to go home, just tell the person in the back, my staff, Malia, that you don't want to be on the speakers list anymore and provide your testimony on your way out. There is no formal question and answer. You may have questions that come up tonight and we would like to get those answers, but we don't have time tonight. So Anne is holding up these green comment cards. If you have a question now, if you have a question during the hearing, you can find those at the table in the back or you can get one from Anne when you come up to testify. And as we were working through this last night, people had questions when they came to the table, so we went ahead and filled out a question card. Those questions will then be posted on our website, so that you will be able to see the answers. And I think I just need to tell you my staff. So in the very back is Bill Ryan at the comment table. Bill, I, we can't see you because there's so many people in there. He's waving, he's waving. There you go. That's the comment table. Next to Bill in the back is Eric Metz and Bob Love Dell. Can someone be wait? Thank you, Bob. They will answer your questions about this project that pertains to the application. And across from them are the Jordan Coe folks who are here to answer your questions about their project because they are the applicant and it's important that they're here. All right, we've got restrooms out here. Please do not congregate out here. We have Sheriff's Office here for security if anyone has any questions. But we ask that you not congregate out here. There are other restrooms out here as well. So just go out and do your thing and come back. All right, so with that, I had someone that raised a hand. Yes, sir?
Hi, Bob Shan, I'm a written word sign or a visual person. And I have one of the previous lawyers, one of the staff, and I would like to ask...
Yes, you may. If you have any written documents of any kind that you'd like to give to us, bring it with you. Bring it up with you to the table. Any other questions? Does anyone have any other questions about those rules? Okay, now that I don't see any questions, I'm going to assume you all understand them. And we're going to have a really great hearing tonight. I'm looking forward to hearing from each of you. So I am going to call up the first eight people as soon as I get a list. Malia, can someone run up a list, please? Well, how do you like that? Okay, so I'm going to call up eight people. The first two I call will come directly to the speakers table and please wait. And then as those folks do that, I'll keep calling people to come up and you'll sit quietly waiting your turn. If I mispronounce your name, I apologize in advance. Chris Matthews, come up, please. Allison Lott?
Lottlin.
Lottlin. Lottlin? Okay, you can take the first two. Rich Royer. Paul Puccino. Jeff Land. Barry Thalden. Right here, John. And, oh, you know what I forgot to ask? Jeff Holden. I forgot. That's his active, I forgot. So what I did last night that I forgot to do... Is last night I called up any tribal chairs or chiefs and any elected officials to testify first. I forgot to do that. So we're going to go ahead and take this panel and then I will call up those folks.
I'm kind of, I'm shocked.
It's all right. It's okay. It's okay, it's fine. All right, they have agreed to defer. Listen.
Go ahead, I'm not, I'm not there yet. I'm only four.
Okay, listen. All right. Okay, so I can have one more person come up. Sarah Queener Lorday.
She gave me her skirt and she needs to make her hair.
Okay, find your seat, please. All right, so these eight folks will testify now and then I will call any elected officials or tribal leaders and then we'll get them to our list. So Anne, our speakers have two minutes. Please state your name, spell it, and tell us where you're from before you start. And then your clock will start to tick. All right? Thank you. Can we have some quiet in the back, please?
Okay, so when you guys, when you guys are speaking, you will hold this microphone. Speak into this microphone here, this is for the speakers. But you also need to be facing this direction because we have a Yeti microphone that is connected to our computer so that we can make sure that we record your testimonies so that our transcriptionist can make sure that we gave your comments correct. So we need to make sure that we spell our names so that the transcriptionist can get that right too. So as long as the microphone is working, we're good to go. Can you guys hear me? All right. So let me sit down for just a second. All right, sir?
Hello, my name is Chris Matthews.
No, it's not working.
Hold it up.
Hang on, hold on a minute. You have to eat it, but it wasn't...
Mark?
Can you use mine in the meantime?
Yeah.
It's on.
Hello, my name is Chris Matthews. I live in K- Junction, Oregon. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm against the LNB pipeline. I'm against Jordan Coe for a variety of reasons. I'm against the environmental destruction of a 220, 230 mile clear cut. No matter what they say, there are going to be tons and tons of sediment in all of our waters, creeks, streams, and rivers. The Panama Canal recently was enlarged so ships can load up in Houston and ship their natural gas from there. I'm also against that a Canadian-born company would have the right to take Oregonian's private property under eminent domain. This is supposedly taking a private property for the public good. I do not see any good in this. The promise of jobs is also a farce. There is nothing in this for Oregon. Please stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Allison Lottlin. A-L-I-S-O-N. Lottlin. L-A-U-G-H. L-I-N. I've lived in Ashland for 45 years and worked in the Valley. I hear your request for information just on the dredging. I hear that you're going to have dozens more hearings. We've been going through this for a long time. I've been to many hearings and I've testified many times. This one piece of time is a concern to me because the whole project doesn't make sense. And as time goes on, it makes less sense. The impact to the environment, the increase in fire risk, both in Coos Bay and in the forest route of the pipeline. To mention a couple of things, the tunneling under the Rogue and the Clamath Rivers is unspeakable. The dredging is so that these huge ships can come in, they'll be lined up on the horizon and they'll be coming in. The impact of that dredging on the commercial oyster beds and fishing in Coos Bay, it's going to fundamentally reshape the Coos Bay shoreline and affect them and impact jobs. When the highway bridge changes were made a few years ago, it massively affected the oyster beds and permanently affected that industry. I can't imagine the effect of this dredging. So my request to you is that, I mean, we've just got to stop at how much time can we spend one piece at a time to encourage a company to export at our expense? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have signatures.
I'm sorry, no clapping.
I'm sorry. This is your one warning. You get one warning tonight. I'm really sorry. Please do not have that in store disruption. Please remember silent support. That's your one and only warning. Thank you.
Okay, well, I know. Okay, so I would like to try this again. We've turned the volume up and so if you can kind of hold it like an ice cream cone, then hopefully everybody will be able to hear you.
My name is Richard Royer. R-I-C-A-R-D. Deja vu. What's new? This is the third, fourth time that I've been involved in this. We've been three times. I mean, I don't know what's new. There's the, something I'd like to talk about on Highway 227, just at the, over the top of the Douglas County, about a mile. There's a bad spot in the road. It's been there since Mount St. Helms blew. That whole mountain moves. They're putting a pipeline right through there. You know, I, I think I ought to also bring up the problem with terrorism. This is a terrorist attraction. There's another thing I want to talk about. I have a friend who's a laborer and he worked on the gas line from Eagle Point to Shetty Cove. When they got done with that job, they asked him if he wanted to be an inspector, a welding inspector. They told him he'd never welded before in his life. They said, "That's fine." They gave him a book and they gave him a test. We're dealing with bleak, bleak, bleak people.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Do I have to press a button?
No. No, you don't have to press the button at all.
Hi, my name is Paul Pratchenko. It's P-A-U-L-P-R-A-T-C-H-E-N-K-O. I'm a resident of Medford. It's hard to get specific about this plan. I haven't seen an environmental impact report. Sure like to, but it appears on the surface to me, with the expertise of a man that's 75 years old that spent his whole life walking these mountains and streams, that it's going to be very deleterious to the area and to the people that live here. I would ask that the people that are developing this, keep in mind the words of Tolstoy. Who do you think you are destroying what you cannot build? Leave something for the kids. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, and I'll ask all speakers to, I'll ask all speakers to exit so more folks can come in. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Land. I'm a resident of Jackson County. I understand the people that are putting this proposal forward are not... I live here because I like it. It's a beautiful place. We have clean air and water. And I just want to quote some statistics. According to the government website, there are 2,500 pipelines in the U.S. Of that, over 500 of them are currently leaking. Of those 500, over 300 have been leaking for over three years. Why are they leaking so long? Because the executive sitting in Vancouver, looking at a P&L sheet, doesn't think they're broken. Okay? I'm sure that all those pipelines that are currently leaking have a world-class response and safety system, just like we're being promised here. However, the only way I would change my position on this pipeline project is if tiny homes were built every 100 yards down the pipeline and all of the homeless vets that we have in the area were employed to live in those homes and walk the pipeline with an electronic device to check for leaks. And if they find a leak, the device shuts the pipeline down. That's, I mean, I'm not, I'm a reasonable guy. I'm not trying to be hard, but here. So, you know, I live here because I like it and I don't want to see my environment destroyed so an executive in Vancouver can buy a new car for a new boat. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would encourage any of you who are meeting to please tell the folks outside the rule about silent support. You're doing really well. Thank you. Can I have the next person to come up? Sir?
Thank you for being here. My name is Barry Thalden. B-A-R-R-Y. T-A-L-D-E-N. I'm a resident of Ashland. And I'm against this project and against this permit. We're living on a planet in which plant and animal life is dying at an alarming pace. Much of this is not caused by the, now I've talked about so much climate change. A lot of it is caused by the destruction of land and water. Protecting our state's land and waterways is the purview of this agency. The project that you're reviewing is so insidious as to be destructive to both land and water. And I want to address specifically the issues of this specific permit related to the land. The construction of this pipeline will cause great destruction. The soil will be overturned, causing it to dry out and also erode. To make it worse, the trees that will be cut down along this easement, eliminating the shade that protects the soil and the roots that protect the soil from erosion. The water, the pipeline construction through our rivers will unquestionably cause erosion and future leaks will poison our waters. This agency also supports K through 12 education. And what kind of a world are we leaving our K through 12 kids if we leave them with further destruction of this planet? In conclusion, like the snake in the Bible story of Adam and Eve in the Garden of Eden, the snaking pipeline takes advantage of our naivety while destroying our opportunity to live in the paradise we've been given. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to leave your written testimony?
Can I send it in?
Absolutely.
I will. Thank you.
All right, ma'am.
Thank you so much for meeting with us. I really appreciate it.
I'll just speak up into the microphone and into the speakers. That would be great. Thank you.
My name is Caroline O'Brien. C-A-R-O-L-I-N-E. O-B-R-I-E-N. I am an environmental science and policy student at SOU, and I am scared. My generation and those after will experience greater intensity, duration, and frequency in seasonal storms all over the world due to greenhouse gas emissions and pollution, creating environmental, economic, and social catastrophe. There is nothing ethical or convenient about pipelines or burning fossil fuels. It is a quick, cheap, finite, and dangerous solution to our current energy issues. We are so close to safer solutions. I'd like to see investments in science, technology, engineering, and mechanics, as well as promotion of diversity. I believe that will make us more likely to reach healthy, long-term solutions sooner. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Sir, please come closer. Sir, where you come from?
I'm an elected official. That's my reason to be here.
Oh, thank you. Go ahead and come up. And you can sit next to the Senator-elect.
Thank you. Right here, right here, yeah.
Yeah, just like an ice cream cone.
My name is Jeff Golden. I live in Ashland and this Monday I'll begin... waters of the state. A landowner who wants to alter a stream bed even a few inches, or install a tiny hydro turbine, or deposit riprap over a hundred and feet of frontage, needs your approval. Sometimes you grant it, sometimes if you find it would increase turbidity or disturb fish habitat, or destabilize the banks, you say no. That's your job. Here, we're talking about a project that would scrape clean a right-of-way up to a hundred feet and lay a thirty-six-inch gas pipeline across two-hundred-and-twenty-nine miles of southern Oregon's forests, farmlands, and wetlands, crossing rivers and streams not one, not ten, not a few dozen, but over four-hundred times. It is hard to wrap your mind around the magnitude of this disruption. Excavating and backfilling four-hundred waterways to transport massive amounts of a product that has triggered multiple explosions on pipelines that were surely touted as a hundred percent safe by the companies that built them. The line cuts through miles of the kind of parched forest lands that have been fueling wildfires that devastate summertime quality of life and public health. Add to that the scientific consensus that western Oregon's overdue for major seismic movement in coming years. An endless flow of velocity brochures landing in our mailbox says we should stop fretting. They have happy, smiling people in heart hats, lots of promises and guarantees, and at the end the pledge "We do right by our neighbors." Southern Oregon has tens of thousands of neighbors who look at the route, the on-the-ground, underwater realities of this project and long-term record of pipeline mishaps, wildfire and earthquake projections for our region, and say no. These are false, flatly, undeliverable promises. Please uphold your mission to ensure the protection of the waters of the state, but by denying this permit now and whenever it might be revived in the future. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. Whoever just yelled, please exit. I am serious. I have asked, I've given one warning, this is a warning and a hack. You must exit if you have just yelled.
Sorry, it was me, but I just entered, I did not hear. Can you give me another chance? I didn't know, I didn't know that.
The ground rules are posted, ma'am. I'm sorry.
It's just that the lighting was not...
I'm sorry, ma'am. I am sorry, ma'am, please exit.
I think it's not fair.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm not here arguing with you. The ground rules are the ground rules.
Well, if you had come in on the time...
I'm sorry, ma'am. All right, can you have elected officials here in front? I'll ask for tribal chiefs in a moment. Sir, you are an elected official, so please announce yourself and begin, and I'll have someone come up here, please. I'd be happy to allow the tribal officials to speak before elected officials, if that was... Do I have any tribal, sir? Please take a seat. Do I have any tribal chiefs or tribal chairs in the room? If you are in the room, please come forward. All right, there are none, so, ma'am, come forward. All right, thank you.
There are, they're making their way.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Have a seat, please, and let me begin.
Hi, my name is Julian Bell, and it's J.U.L.I.A.N.B.E.L.L. And this is testimony for the Department of State Lands regarding the Jordan Cove remove and fill permits. The Department of State Lands is required to assess the economic costs to our state of the Jordan Cove project. If this project is built, it will generate significant additional greenhouse gas emissions for Oregon and the planet, and thereby worsen climate change. Climate change is already harming our economy. It is expected to worsen water shortages, damage our forests, add to the firefighting costs of our state, cause crop losses, create food insecurity, harm our real estate market, damage our tourist industry, inundate our coastal cities, including Coos Bay, and cause mass displacement of people. These are real economic harms. People are already losing their jobs. In Ashland, there are people that we know. Expected revenue is being lost, businesses are closing or downsizing, people are suffering expensive health impacts. People with the financial means are already leaving our region and our state. These may be the manageable economic consequences of climate change, but it seems likely that some of the consequences will be unmanageable. Jordan Cove is not the only source of greenhouse gas emissions in Oregon or on the planet, but this is not rationale for permitting the project. This is a rationale for denying this project and working to eliminate or minimize all the other sources of greenhouse gas emissions as quickly as possible. There are many good reasons to deny the permits for this project, but the negative economic impacts to our state are by themselves a sufficient reason. Thanks so much for hearing my testimony.
Mr. What is your elected office?
I'm with the Ashland Parks and Recreation Commission.
Thank you. All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you. I am no chief, but I am a representative of the Hopi Nation. I'm known as Pahana. The salmon's job is to swim, the beaver's job is to build, the insect's job is to breathe, the tree's job is to breathe. None of them can do their job if this pipeline comes through. And you may hear a lot of things about some jobs, about steam pipers fitting in here, but the reality is they're far, 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 a small number to those that lose. Not worth it. So as representative, none of us approve of this pipeline or any pipeline, because humans and animals and the air that we breathe is affected by this. These machines create residue. And the long-term, the long-term effect affects our grandbabies, the ones that you want to get back to. And this is what we're here for. We're not here for us today, we're here for our tomorrow. This is what we're here for. This is why you have a thousand people, literally, if you can see what's outside, in support of the land, the air, the earth, and the spirit that connects us all, you would know that this is hands-down a pipe that should never, ever be here. Especially through Klamath Falls, which is an area, I mean, you're talking from the Pacific Ocean all the way into the basins, it cuts through the entire state of Oregon along with the entire ecosystem. It will actually destroy the state and the economy, because you can't swim in a river that's full of oil, you can't fish in a river that's dry. You just can't. So we beg you to please use compassion and not let this pipeline happen.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could you write your name down for us, the one we have you on the list?
Tribal name?
However you would like your comment recorded as your name, that would be wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, can I have someone come up and pick another seat, please?
My name is Emily Berlant, E.M.I.L.Y.B.E.R.L.A.N.T. And I am the City of Talent City Council President. Thank you for hosting this hearing this evening for the three-to-five-thousand people who have come throughout Jackson County to speak to you about their concerns of the Jordan Cove pipeline. I grew up in Grants Pass on the Rogue River and have been fortunate enough to spend most of my life rafting and recreating on the river. I actually got to spend some of my childhood rafting with Jeff Golden. I'm very concerned that this pipeline, were it to be built, would devastate the lifeblood of our community, our clean water for drinking and for recreating. As a city councillor in Talent, my priorities in representing my community have to do with responding to and preparing for the impact of a changing climate. And that includes protecting our water sources. Talent has a Clean Energy Action Plan and is working diligently to transition to clean energy and improve the livability and resiliency of our community. Approving this pipeline would squander our hard work and deplete our quality of life. This project would become the largest source of climate pollution in the state, would pollute our waters, and would make us more susceptible to fire devastation. Though Talent isn't directly on the pipeline route, our water supply is. So I am committing to asking my council to take an official position in opposition to Jordan Cove and the Pacific Connector Pipeline. We know that this project is bad for Oregon, and so I ask you, Department of State Lands, are you committed to ensuring our community's water is protected, not just for the future, but today? We can't push this further along. This is happening now, and we need to respond to it today.
Thank you. Thank you, audience.
Hello, my name is Stuart Warren. I am a city councillor in the city of Phoenix here. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm here on my own accord, representing a number of my constituents, not the city council as a whole. My main concern with this project at this point in time is, of course, the waterways being impacted, and of course, that's why I'm here this evening. Stuart Warren, S.T.U.A.R.T., last name W.A.R.R.E. The city of Phoenix, similar to the city of Talent, shares the same water source, which comes from the Rogue River, especially in the summertime when our flows are low and the upper spring boundaries are running low. So we withdraw water from the Medford Water Commission's intake, which is directly at Two Bell State Park. That intake is directly downstream of Little Buick Creek, Big Buick Creek, Elk Creek, and the Upper Rogue River, not to mention the number of small tributaries that flow in from up there. Any sort of disruption along those tributaries is going to cause additional sedimentation into that water source, and it's going to make it harder and harder for us to actually continue to provide cold, clean water to our residents. So I'm asking the Department of State Lands to deny this permit and the fact that it will negatively impact drinking water sources for Medford, Phoenix, Talent, Ashland, and a whole laundry list of a number of communities here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next. Just a little closer to that and I can speak up, so everybody can hear you and the microphone, that would be awesome.
My name is Jason Clark, J.A.S.O.N. And I'm a member of the Talent City Council, and I have spoken with lots of Talent residents in recent months, and they have voiced to me various concerns about this project that I'd like to share with you, some of those now. Talent residents are concerned about impacts to waters and wetlands, destabilizing of stream banks, added sediment to the rivers, compromises to fisheries. Folks are concerned about the risk of wildfire and seismic instability, which could certainly contribute to that. People are concerned that no amount of mitigation will balance the level of risk that the citizens of southwest Oregon would have to bear if this project were to go through. People are concerned that we are continuing to consider projects that exacerbate climate change. But the most consistent concern that I have heard is that the social and environmental risks associated with this are tremendous, and they are borne of all of the residents of this entire region, and the rewards are also tremendous. But those would be reaped by a very small number, mostly big investors and a Canadian corporation. So I would ask the Department of State Lands, please do not ask the residents of southwest Oregon to bear this risk on behalf of the very small number of people who would reap the rewards. And I will support Talent City Council in a resolution opposing this pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, audience. Next, next one forward. As soon as we work through the elected officials, we'll go back to the priority list.
Tanya Graham, T.O.N.Y.A.G.R.A.H.A.M. So my name is Tanya Graham. I am an Ashland City Councillor, but I speak tonight on behalf of many of my constituents, as well as as the Executive Director of the GFC Institute. My team at the GFC Institute helps communities build climate resilience by helping them understand the local impacts of climate change and taking effective action to reduce those risks. We are living daily with the consequences of the decisions that were made decades ago, and the impacts will only get worse with time, and that's why this decision is so important. The International Panel on Climate Change recently released a special report that issues the dire warning that we must reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by forty-five percent from 2010 levels by 2030 if we are to have any chance at all of heading off the global climate crisis. We have twelve years. Investing in fossil fuel infrastructure simply is not the right path forward. As the adults in our society at this moment, we are responsible for caring for the present as well as the future, the buck stops with us. The decision being made here will be a big part of the legacy we, as Oregonians, leave to our children. Our watersheds are under increasing stress due to changing climate conditions and human development. If we are to allow eighty-eight stream crossings in the Rogue watershed alone, there should be a significant, long-term value for us in this trade, and that is not the case here. I grew up in a very small community, and there are many experiences that make rural living particularly satisfying, but there's no denying the fact that it is often hard to earn a living in a small town. Economic development in rural areas must be a priority of our state, but we need to hold ourselves to a higher standard by creating long-term jobs that will support our transition away from the fossil fuels that are jeopardizing our families and communities. Our future leaders are here in this room tonight, and they are asking us to do our job to protect their future, so please deny Jordan Cove's removal, fill permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce. Ma'am?
My name is Eleanor Pononareff. I am a newly-elected member of the Talent City Council, speaking on my own behalf and those constituents I represent, in opposition to the granting of this permit, and I join my fellow councillor in supporting a resolution on behalf of the council, that proposal. You have heard from others on the devastating environmental and economic impacts the construction of this proposed pipeline would have to the land and waterways in its path. You have heard about the disturbance of toxic contaminants and the very real threat to health and safety of more than a hundred thousand Oregonians who drink this water. The city of Talent is one of the communities whose residents are downstream of the waterways that would be harmed by this project. It would be difficult to explain to the folks of my city and other cities like it how our water supply was put at risk so that a foreign company could benefit economically. It becomes harder to explain with the evidence that such a project would damage Oregon's economy and exacerbate Oregon's greenhouse gas emissions with potent methane gas leaks. Given the gravity of this threat, given the gravity of the threat this proposed project presents to human health and safety, as well as to Oregon's environment and economy, I urge you to take the responsible action and deny this permit. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Darby Ayers-Flood, D.A.R.B.Y.A.Y.E.R.S hyphen F.L.O.O.D. I'm here tonight to serve the city of Talent as the mayor, and also to speak on behalf of my professional career. I join my fellow council members in support of Emily's proposal to write a resolution opposing this application. I just want to say on a personal note, as a mayor of a community that works very, very hard to present positive solutions on alternative energy, clean energy sources, how disheartening it is to be here testifying on this act on behalf of an outside entity that will impose what I consider some horrible environmental issues for southern Oregon. But I can't really add any more to the discussion from the city of Talent's perspective than the city council that is here tonight has already done. So let me just speak a little bit about my career. I am a leader in the tourism industry locally. I have served on VCBs, chambers, also... what I consider horrible environmental issues for southern Oregon. But I can't really add any more to the discussion from the city's of Towns' perspective than the city council that is here tonight has already done. So let me just speak a little bit about my career. I am a leader in the tourism industry locally. I have served on VCBs, chambers, also other related travel-related boards. I've worked in three major tourism markets early in my career, Santa Cruz, also Lake Tahoe, and then for 30 years here in southern Oregon. And these markets all have nothing in common, and that is that water is the main visitor attraction. Every other attraction is secondary. Our tourism springs up around water and is sustained by water. Water recreation is key in tourism, and it quite literally is the source of one of the biggest economies in southern Oregon. The Rogue River is an economy in and of itself, from Crater Lake National Park down to the Pacific Ocean and everything in between. The fire season is already causing havoc on our on our economy, and this only would further exacerbate that. Please vote no.
No, actually, I'll send it in.
Okay. Great. One more elected official? Two? Okay. Come on. And then I'll call up a new half of eight folks instead of eight. All right, ladies.
Hi there, my name is Kay Brooks, K.A.Y.B.R.O.O.K.S. I'm here as a Medford City councillor. I'm representing only myself, unfortunately, as well as my many constituents within the city of Medford that are concerned about our water supply and its safety. I pretty much agree with everybody that came before me. We have a significantly water-driven economy here, tourism-driven, water-sport-driven, and that will be destroyed potentially if it comes through our area. In addition to the waterways, which is clearly a huge point for our economy, it's not just about the money, it's also about clean drinking water. Clearly, we need that to be functioning societies. But in addition to that, it's also a quality of life and a cultural issue. Before I lived here, I grew up in coastal Alabama, on the Gulf Coast. There, we have a tourism economy as well. We have beautiful beaches, sugar white beaches. We have, you know, beautiful beaches with dolphins and sand dunes, et cetera. If you remember the Deepwater Horizon oil spill, our tourism economy was completely wrecked. Our fishing and tripping economies were completely wrecked. Our economy turned into the BP payout economy. You couldn't go more than 100 yards on any highway without seeing billboards that said, "Have you filed your BP claim yet?" Many members of my family themselves had filed BP claims in exchange for never suing any of these companies for birth defects or cancer, et cetera. You had waitresses getting $30,000 payouts because their economy is completely wrecked. Their restaurants were destroyed, our sand dunes were destroyed. We had endangered animals that lived in those sand dunes that died off. So I would hope that in addition to what everybody else said about our economy here being wrecked by the fires, Travel Medford, which works in concert with the Chamber of Commerce, has talked about significant issues with losing money to tourism, and I can only imagine that that would be completely exacerbated if we put a pipeline of gas through it. Thank you.
Thank you. One more elected official, representative of an elected official, and then we'll move back to our list. Ma'am?
Hello, Director Walker. Thank you for this opportunity to submit testimony this evening. My name is Paige Pruitt, P.A.I.G.E.P.R.E.W.E.T.T., district legislative aide for Representative Pam Marsh, Oregon House District Five, which encompasses southern Jackson County. Representative Marsh is in Salem and not able to be here in person, so she asked me to be here on her behalf to submit formal testimony expressing her strong opposition. While there is not time to present its entirety, I will read excerpts emphasizing her three main points to you now. One, this project and associated dredging would impact 485 streams and water bodies within Oregon. Mitigation that is required by any loss of wetlands needs to be located in the same watershed area to minimize regional loss. It is very difficult to imagine that such mitigation, if it were to be attempted, would balance the loss of habitat quality associated with construction and maintenance of this facility. What enforcement mechanisms would DSL use to ensure that mitigation would be undertaken and that water quality would be protected over the life of the project? Two, given rapidly evolving technologies, volatile global energy markets, and more frequent climate-related catastrophes, this project faces a high probability of obsolescence in the relatively near future. Will Oregon bear the costs associated with half-built or abandoned pipeline and compression facility? At the very least, DSL must protect Oregon taxpayers from such liabilities via a robust bonding requirement. And three, if I understand your policy correctly, DSL does not consider global environmental impacts to be relevant when reviewing applications for projects affecting state lands. This position is not defensible. Global impacts affect Oregon, already reducing our seasonal water supplies, driving more frequent and destructive wildfires, and costing the Oregon economy millions of dollars as wildfire smoke discourages summer visitors. Therefore, in addition to waterway impacts, I urge you to consider long-term consequences of this fossil fuel infrastructure. Review of Jordan Cove's permit request must include consideration of all predictable outcomes, including both environmental and financial implications. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pruitt. All right, we're, thank you very much, audience. We're going to go back to our list and move quickly and call up the next eight. Gary Woodring, Barbara Falsy, Falsy, David Baker, Stephen Gaila, Dr. Thaddeus Gaila, Daniel Dale Redd, I think, or Leo, sorry, and maybe Count, where am I? Peter Ware. Okay, that'll do it. All right, Mr. Woodring.
This on? Yes. The earth is not a commodity. The earth is not a commodity. Oregon is well aware of this. Governor West, over 100 years ago, declared that beach a state highway. There are some places where there are cars on it, and that's kind of offensive, but anyway, that's true.
Microphone, please, we can't hear you.
I am opposed to this project because over 400 rivers and creeks will be affected by this line, and we've already heard testimony that explosions occur with these pipelines. The proponents of this project have called it Jordan Cove. I've been to, I've been to Coos Bay, I understand what it is. It's that they're going to build on a 500-acre place, this project, in a marsh area called Henderson Marsh. So the PR effort, the false news, is Jordan Cove, which is not, it's a little pimple on the cove. That's false news. We're used to that. I think I'm through.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I am Barbara Falsy, that's F like in Frank, A.L.C.Y., and I live in Trillio. I am opposed to the fracked gas pipeline projects because they have a huge potential to damage our rivers and streams. It's a known fact that fracking will change the habitat and spawning of salmon, which we all know this Upper Rogue area is known for. I believe that dredging of the bay will be terribly harmful to all salmon and shellfish. My family and I go to the coast just for those reasons, and I love rafting and hiking along the Rogue River, and I feel that these changes would only be harmful in many, many ways. I have just a few bullet points, because everyone has talked about all their concerns, and we all have the same ones, but the impact to wetlands and the climate issues that we're already changing and how it will worsen those issues, the warmer waters for all the fish and what the fish need to eat and survive on, and the quality of the habitat for the fish. And we should be protecting and conserving our Oregon waterways instead of trying to harm them. I believe that these affected lands, homes, and properties are the inheritance for our children and grandchildren, and they look forward to living this kind of lifestyle in rural Oregon. And the efficacy of a pipeline is in no way comparable to the destruction of our homes and lives. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to call up some more folks. Two of you come forward, please. Mitch Ricker, Sean Jones, Don Berry, and Mike Finley.
Sorry, did you hear that? I didn't use my microphone. Thank you.
All right. State your name, where you're from, spell it. Spell your name, not where you're from.
I'm David Baker. I've lived in the Rogue Valley since 1989. David is D.A.V.I.D.B.A.K.E.R. I have some familiarity with gas transmission pipelines and LNG gas liquefaction plants. As in the 1970s, I was an executive with the Bechtel Corporation in San Francisco. During this time, Bechtel participated in building the Alaska Pipeline in Alaska and an LNG terminal in Bethua, Algeria. As Director of Corporate Information, I was familiar with both projects. The informational material released by Pambina via direct mail and on TV emphasizes the economic benefits to Oregon in terms of increased employment during construction and the post-construction period when the pipeline and terminal are operational. There is no question that the construction of a pipeline in Jordan Cove LNG terminal would be labor-intensive. By way of comparison, the workforce in Algeria at that LNG plant was 10,000 people. Workers were imported from over 20 countries since the technical skills, especially pipe fitters and certified welders, were not available in Algeria. For the Alaska Pipeline, we recruited workers from across the United States for the same reason. Yes, the pipeline will require a workforce from within Oregon, particularly in clearing the right-of-way and construction of service roads that support trenching and drilling. However, the limited availability of certified welders, ultrasound, and X-ray technicians will require the contractor to recruit from outside Oregon and only during the duration of the project. Furthermore, because most of the pipeline construction will occur in rural Oregon, the benefit in retail businesses cited by Pambina will be modest, and when they do occur, it will be relatively short time. In operation, the pipeline will require a minimal number of maintenance workers. My knowledge of pipeline construction projects and operations strongly suggests that the local employment opportunities from the Jordan Cove project are generally, are greatly overstated. The pipeline and LNG terminal will bring jobs to Oregon, but it will require workers from out of state and not be as beneficial to Oregon's as Pambina has promised.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Stefan Galla, and I yield my time to Dr. Thaddeus Galla.
My name is Dr. Thaddeus Galla, and I've been a lifelong resident in southern Oregon. My name is Dr. Thaddeus Galla, T.H.A.D.D.E.U.S.G.A.L.A. You're welcome. As a practicing provider, I have an intent of protecting the health of the people and the land that they live on. There's been a longstanding tradition of governments and other organizations overstepping into their boundaries and abusing power. The U.S. first set precedence by coercively and deliberately taking lands from Native Americans and continues to do so today to the current inhabitants through the use of force without oversight. This overstep has now been erroneously and unlawfully extended to organizations that are deemed large enough to influence and direct the government's hand under the smokescreen of public interest. First, we must understand that eminent domain has little merit if we are to live in a free and liberated society, and in fact, should only be exercised when absolutely necessary to protect that free and liberated society, not granted to private entities under the guise of liberty, welfare, or protection. Second, the exercise of eminent domain as currently defined shall offer just compensation, which is defined as fair market value. IRS Regulation 20.2031-1 defines fair market value as the price at which property would change hands between a willing buyer and a willing seller. This means fair market value is a transaction to be defined and determined solely between a willing seller and a willing buyer. If an individual decides they are willing to sell an acre of land for $1 or $1 billion, that is their privilege, and their privilege alone, to determine. This is what defines a free market and a society free from coercion and tyrannical overstep when determining property rights. I set precedence in this and an unrelated matter of eminent domain when the government ultimately agreed to pay me my selling and will for asking price, which was over 320 percent of their initial offering to acquire and confiscate a portion of my property for public use. When Elk Creek Dam was put in, many people were forcibly relocated against their will. When the project was mothballed, the government blatantly retained the property without giving the previous owners a chance to regain their homesteads. Thank you. Simply because something is legal does not make it right. To prove that, one merely has to look at the unrealistic marijuana and hemp laws that shackled this country until recently. The reason we have a republic and not a full democracy is to protect the freedoms of the individual. If we had a democracy and 51% of the proper people considered the taking of someone's land to be in the public's best interest, whether it be for national defense or for a local swimming pool, that individual would have little to no recourse, which is why we must stand up for the individual's sovereignty and rights over collectivism. Otherwise, one day, we will find each of ourselves singularly at the heart of being forced into an unwelcome situation. In summary, we can approach exchanges, relationships, and transactions in society by one of three ways. Number one, you can decide to be a tyrant with an agenda of profits and force people against their will into a transaction or relationship that they do not desire, which by default creates the second, which is you become a slave to that tyrant's threat or use of force. And I use the word "force" because if a property owner disagrees with selling their property for long enough, eventually, someone from the government with a gun will show up on your doorstep. The third is the most desirable and palatable method for a free and civilized society. This is through negotiation and discussion, which we have lacked sorely in this country when it comes to protecting personal liberties. We know from the Bundy standoff that people can only be pushed so far against government or large organization overstep when it begins acting in a tyrannical manner, forcing people against their free will. While there are countless issues surrounding this pipeline proposal that have equal merit and relevancy, when discussing the longstanding abuse of overstep, we must protect the individual's liberties and freedoms of choice and control over their domain at all costs. The issue is one of personal property rights and the freedoms of the individual. A removal fill permit must be denied on any lands acquired without the consent of the owner. Seizure of land from unwilling owners by use of force, coercion, or other manipulative methods will not be tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you, audience. Call up three more. Mike Finley, did I call? Oops, I called you already. Yes, I recognize you.
Susan Dallas, Greg Johnson, and Joshua Peterson. And if any three wanted something else, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you both for being here today. My name is Daniel Del Rio, D.A.N.I.E.L., D.E.L., space, R.E.A.L. I'm a business agent for the Carpenters Union, but more importantly, I'm a voice for working families. I'm here today to voice my strong support for the Jordan Cove project. I want to point out that I am here after a full day of work. I am not retired, I am not independently wealthy, and I drove here in my own car as opposed to a tour bus. Please look around the room today. How many people voicing opinions are part of the active workforce? As a voice for working families, this concerns me. The majority of the people against the project are retired, and there's nothing wrong with that. I hope to get there myself someday. However, they don't need the jobs or the security raised by families. We need these jobs because we earn our wages, we earn our retirement, and we earn our healthcare. Nothing is given to us. My past work history included working for several financial institutions. My primary job was to head to these locations that were dying off, some of them smaller cities, but the two that stood out to me the most were Aberdeen and Crescent City, both coastal cities much like Coos Bay and North Bend. It would break my heart to head to those places and close down banks that people had to use for 30-plus years. One of the ones that actually comes to mind was watching an 80-year-old woman hobble into the bank with a walker and having to tell her that the nearest one was 38 miles away. The project will be built with the best trained labor available, with environmentally responsible building practices. People seem to forget that the people slated to build this project live here, too. We are your neighbors, we own houses that will be affected as well. However, we are thinking for future generations, not just ourselves or our property values. All the people who were raised here and are raising families here, what will your children do for work locally? History shows that they will be moving away from a dead town. For all those traveling to North Bend on Thursday, look at how many vacant buildings, dying businesses, and upkept roads, buildings, and bridges are there. Imagine that in 2020. Imagine that another 10, 20 and 30 years. That's what happens when industry leaves these towns. We have the potential to bring over $10 billion back to the local economy to bring life back into a dying town. I urge everyone at the phone to simply Google "biggest polluters in Oregon" and tell me if energy and transportation companies come anywhere near the top of the list. Please make the right choice and support LNG.
Thank you, sir. Next. Someone else come take a seat, please?
My name is Mitchell Ricker, M-I-T-C-H-E-L-L, R-I-C-K-E-R, and I live in St. Helens, but I am a former resident of Douglas County. I no longer live in Douglas County because the type of work that we do in construction is just not there. I also represent the Oregon Southern Idaho District Council of Laborers, or LIUNA. A lot of people understand that. And we support the Jordan Cove Project and ask that the permit is issued in a timely manner and that we can move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next one, come up, please?
Good evening. My name is Don Barry, that's spelled B-A-R-R-Y. I'm here to express on behalf of myself and 74 other residents of Medford our strongest possible opposition to the Jordan Cove proposal. I should add that I'm not new to bad pipeline proposals, having served for many years as the Chief Counsel of the United States Fish and Wildlife Service and as the Interior Department Assistant Secretary in charge of the National Park Service and Fish and Wildlife Service. There are many reasons why this proposal should be rejected. Last month, Oregon released its Cascadia earthquake playbook, laying out the likely catastrophic impacts from a long overdue massive earthquake. It would be incredibly hypocritical for the state to issue dire warnings on the likely loss of up to 25,000 citizens and major transportation, communications and energy infrastructure loss, only to then turn around and authorize a 229-mile-long pipeline and LGN terminal in the Cascadia impact zone. Moreover, destructive gas pipeline explosions happen much more frequently than gas companies want to acknowledge. An explosion, for whatever reason, during fire season would be catastrophic for public safety. Regarding the likely severe impacts of the project upon key water resources and the environment, the proposed pipeline would involve a crossing and construction of hundreds of crossings over rivers and streams in southern Oregon. The negative environmental effect of the construction of so many crossings from sedimentation, shade removal and habitat alteration cumulatively would be severe. Moreover, the project is estimated to generate up to a staggering 18 million cubic yards of dredge material for disposal on upland sites, increasing the huge sedimentation impact of this proposal. An even greater amount of dredge material will be disposed of in the oceans. I should also just say, I spent the afternoon reading 55 pages of comments on this proposal from the Oregon Fish and Wildlife Agency that was prepared last summer. Over and over again, the agency noted that there was inadequate information or not enough analysis in their mitigation proposals for them to really assess the impacts of this proposal. Let me just say that in one of its slick marketing mailings, Jordan Cove stated that it wanted to respect Oregon. The Department of State Lands should help the company do just that by rejecting its dangerous pipeline and terminal proposal, leaving southern Oregon alone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next. Someone come up, please? Thank you. Make sure you spell your last name at least.
My name's Michael Finley, F-I-N-L-E-Y. I'm a resident of Medford, Oregon. I was born here, went to school here, and have a strong feeling for natural resources and support for hunting and fishing. I want to remind all of us that this isn't the first public project that was controversial. If you think about it, we inherit the mistakes of our ancestors and leave obligations and unforeseen impacts for future generations. A pertinent example is the Columbia River and Bonneville Dam, where a 16 million fish fishery was sacrificed for power. An energy trade versus wildlife. In today's world, where we count fish coming up the Columbia in hundreds and for lucky thousands, we might have had a different proposal. There will be obvious benefit to a Canadian gas company and Chinese, Japanese and South Koreans for natural gas. But the question remains, what will we leave our future generation of Oregonians? Here are some impacts to consider. Climate change is real, as the state has acknowledged, shifting weather patterns, heat, fire, drought, impact, loss of ski and ski areas, all the factors that you all know for our fisheries, loss of anadromous fisheries, cold water refuges are needed now to keep fish alive. Oregon signed a climate compact with Washington and California. It was the right thing to do. The state has supported numerous renewable energy projects and shifted away from reliance on fossil fuels. So the question remains, why would this state aid or abet a foreign pipeline corporation to perpetuate the use and distribution of fossil fuels? We must get serious with climate actions. This is a crisis. I just want to comment also that I spent days to talk about details, and this, Madam Director, requires a comprehensive environmental impact statement, if anything does. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to call up...
You missed number 15. She's still sitting back there. Karen Caldwell.
I'm getting it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm mixing, I'm mixing a little bit of the priority with the others, so hang on. Cindy Alvey, Karen Caldwell and Kayla Farrell Smith. Sir, go ahead. Thank you.
My name is Peter Ware, P-E-T-E-R-W-A-R-E. I'm a member of the Medford Congregational United Church of Christ and chairperson of their Justice and Peace Ministry team. The members of our team oppose building the pipeline and terminal for several reasons. We are a creation justice church. We understand climate change as an undeniable reality, and depending on whom you believe, Jordan Cove will be the largest emitter of greenhouse gases in Oregon or close to it. No matter the source, the plant will make Oregon more of a climate polluter. We also have grave concern that the pipeline construction itself will damage many of the hundreds of streams and two major rivers that it will cross, and we also feel that it's a serious injustice to allow eminent domain to be used so that a foreign company can move fracked gas to Asian markets. Oregon's constitution directs the land board to manage lands under its jurisdiction to obtain, quote, "the greatest benefit for the people of Oregon," consistent with resource...
...the quality of living later for generations. I've been offered a small significant insignificant amount of money to allow them to use an easement through my land, which I have turned down, as my neighbors. And in doing so, we have been threatened with illegal use of eminent domain. They have no right to take people's hard-earned land. I am a veteran who fought for my country. I don't come home and buy, I did not come home and buy, I came and bought this land, but not to have some big bully company threaten to come and take it. This is what I sacrificed my life for, to be able to retire on a small piece of land that I can enjoy, my family and friends can enjoy. Please join me in saying no to the Jordan Cove Pipeline. In closing statement, I would like to say that, to the speaker that was up here, a couple of people before me, that I am a retired commercial carpenter, union carpenter. I spent 25 years vested in the union. I went to where the jobs were. I did not bring the jobs to my neighbor's house.
Thank you, sir. Audience, audience.
I'm sorry. Will the clatter please exit? Thank you.
I grew up in Marcellus Shale. I watched people losing their land. Their animals are dying from poisoning. I came to Medford to have a better life and say goodbye to my husband who died. This is not okay.
No, this is not okay.
Use your heart, use your mind and use your words. Say no. Please take me.
Hang in there, you guys.
If we have another outburst like that, I will close the hearing. I'm terribly sorry, but I will close the hearing if there is another outburst like that. So whoever wants to do that will take responsibility for closing this hearing. I would call up Rowena Jackson, Elizabeth Hallett and Joyce Chapman. Sir?
My name is Joshua Patreau, J-O-S-H-U-A-P-A-T-E-R-E-A-U, and I'm concerned about the effects. I oppose the pipeline, and I'm concerned about the effects it'll have on farming land and the lasting effects it'll have on the kids and what will lead for them. The, I have family that the pipeline's going to cross through their property, and they're going to take lots of their land, and kind of blows my mind how you got, how they would allow the amount of damage that it would cause upon Oregon and to the wildlife, and they have salmon and steelhead that swim in their streams and the effects it'll have upon that and the self-sustaining ability of them and their land. I strongly suggest you oppose the pipeline and its forever effects upon us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am? Next person to come forward, please. Whenever there's a seat open, the next one moves down. Thank you. Go ahead and make sure you spell your name and how they're named after them.
My name is Susan Dellis, D-L-L-E-S, as in Sam. I live on Steaks Creek Road in the Butte Falls BLM resource area. The pipeline will go through that area. I'm opposed to this project because of the following environmental impacts: water and river and wetland crossings, endangered species, wild salmon threats, and above all, effects on private landowners with no say in where, what this was going to do for eminent domain. I am a private landowner. It's not going through my land, but I'm just appalled that this can happen to people. The next is damage to the coast bay estuary, and that will be considerable. And the last but not least is climate change, which I'm sure we're all familiar with. I ask that you deny the removal and fill permit for this project.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, go ahead.
My name's Cindy Alvey, C-I-N-D-Y-A-L-V-E-Y, and my husband and I, we don't have a lot, but we were able to scrape together enough money to buy a little house on the Rogue River for our retirement. We live about 200 yards downstream from where this pipeline's going to go under the river. If nothing goes wrong in this construction, our well will go bad, our irrigation from the river for all our yard, our flowers, lawns will go bad. Where I go kayaking, which I do all the time, it's going to be a huge scar. It's not going to be this beautiful place where we decided to retire and scrape everything together to buy this tiny home on the river. The easement is 95 feet wide. It's going to be a clear, clean cut. It's going to be completely devastate the whole feeling of the area. That's if nothing goes wrong. If anything else goes wrong, I mean earthquakes, like we talked about, fires, that could damage it. We have lots of fires here. They leak all the time. This is even going to be a dinosaur because renewable energy sources are what everything is going towards and what needs to happen. So this is a giant, risky, horrible scar on the land that people have come to retire on and enjoy the beauty, and then it's just going to be there with all those same risks long after it's even being used because of renewable energy sources taking its place. So I'm speaking for all the people that are in a situation like me, where it affects us so bad personally, but we know it affects even everyone that's not in this situation. It affects them too.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
My name is Karen, C-A-R-E-N Caldwell, C-A-L-D-W-E-L-L. I live in Ashland. I am a person of faith and an ordained minister, and I oppose Jordan Cove Project. We are living in an era when stewardship of our planet must be a top priority if we want to leave this planet, our home, as rich and healthy for human life as we found it. The Jordan Cove Project is not consistent with protection, conservation, or best use of Oregon's natural resources. Jordan Cove would impact almost 500 waterways, including five regional rivers. It would endanger drinking water, put existing jobs in fishing and tourism at risk, and degrade salmon and wildlife habitat. Dredging activities in Coos Bay would hurt jobs in commercial oyster beds and sensitive fisheries. The export terminal would put thousands of Coos County residents in hazardous burn zone. The natural gas pipeline would cross some of Oregon's most fire-prone areas in forests. Just last October, a similar-sized fracked gas pipeline exploded in British Columbia, and you know what happened then with the large wildfire that followed. In addition, Jordan Cove, if built, would become the largest greenhouse gas emitter in the state, releasing millions of metric tons annually, equivalent to 15 times more than the 2016 emissions from Boardman Coal Plant, which has been scheduled to close because of climate and air pollution concerns. People of faith like me are called to live out a prophetic vision that prioritizes protecting the most vulnerable communities, communities in our society and the abundant creation in which we have the privilege to live. We ask you to join in the work for creation justice and deny any new permits that would place an LNG pipeline and terminal in Oregon. Please help our state transition to clean energy for the sake of a healthy planet. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Should I start?
Yes. Laklisi, Galsasas, Kaila. My name is Kaila Farrell Smith, K-A-I-L-A-F-A-R-R-E-L hyphen Smith, S-M-I-T-H, and I'm from Chillicoon, Oregon, and I'm a member of the Clamath Tribes. And I gave testimony yesterday to more of my personal concerns about this project. But today, I would just like to say, as a Clamath tribal member, as a hike leader, I work for an organization called Signal Fire, and we take artists out on hiking and backpacking trips, so we are accessing public lands and our waterways throughout the year. And as a lifelong Oregonian, I'm born in Ashland, I've lived in the state my whole life, and I've now recently moved back to my ancestral homelands on the former reservation of the Clamath Tribes in Chillicoon, Oregon. And I just want to say I strongly oppose the Jordan Cove LNG and Pacific Connector pipeline proposed projects and request that the Oregon Department of State Lands deny removal fill permit because the proposed activities would harm Oregon's water resources, fishing, navigation and public recreation, as well as increased risk to public health and safety. So last evening, I spoke, I read a statement, but I would like to just reiterate the Clamath Youth Council and Clamath tribal members who weren't able to travel across the mountains tonight and just express our concerns specifically for, a lot of the Clamath Youth Council brought up cultural resources linked to our waterways. And so specifically, I'm an artist and I'm a traditional basket weaver, or I'm learning to, and so within, right where the pipeline would cross underneath the Clamath River is where tuli and cattail grow, and so these are like restored wetlands. And I think this is where we harvest our materials for our cultural resources to weave baskets. Also, some of the food sources like wokas, it's a lily pad in the waterways is one of our ancestral foods. And the language and, and culture that those, those youth we're talking about, it's really important that we protect our waterways and lands so that we can teach, teach the youth how to keep those cultural values alive because it's, it's almost gone. And thank you very much for hearing my concerns.
I'm sorry, whoever clapped, you need to exit. You know the rules. Thank you. I'm going to ask, if I have more people to come up, can you just wait a second? I'll call some folks.
Sure.
Chad Vaughn, Karina O'Brien, Robert Crane and Nancy Nelson.
Thank you.
My name is Rowena Jackson, R-O-W-E-N-A-J-A-C-K-S-O-N, and I'm a Clamath tribal member. It is a given to protect and love our fish for all my relations and next generations. Vicky Walker and Department of State Lands, you too can be a water protector. As we gather on stolen homelands, deny the Pacific Connector. Kate Brown, don't let us down. Corporations dominate in order to excavate. Jordan Cove is on the K-LAD radio station, tooting their own horn. No compassion for the future of the unborn. County Commissioner, Mayor Z, you can relax and mull in, siding with the snake at the expense of the youth. Of seven deadly sins, pride is the most serious sin. side with the snake. Water is life. A clear conscience is a blessing. No regrets after, in the afterlife, because you opposed and stopped the oppressing. My elders fought hard, near and far. Intergenerational trauma, I nurture my scar. I am watered from Clamath and Crater Lake. I will protect our stolen village sites and embrace tribal sacred sites. Rest in peace, my ancestors. Heads up oppressors and even investors. Against the gas pipelines, since the doctrine of discovery and on the front lines. I am bringing awareness and addressing the highlights. Since 1864, we are still at war. Ancestors are with me as I roll up my sleeves. Pipeline verbal track records most likely deceives. Eminent domain for capital gain. This mistreatment is so inhumane. In Wells Fargo, I divest because Mother Earth and her veins are stressed. United, we stand as I raise my hand.
Thank you.
I'm Elizabeth Halat, Elizabeth Halat, E-O-I-Z-A-B-E-T-H, H-A-L-A-T-T. My big concern is trees, and I haven't heard people really talk about trees. And how many trees are going to be sacrificed in the, this project? Last year, I sponsored the planting of 100 trees, but I suspect there are many more than 100 trees that are going to be sacrificed for this project. Trees decontaminate the air. They use carbon dioxins. They hold soil and they stabilize water. My other concern is that science demands that we leave fossil fuels in the ground. What madness promotes the idea of building an infrastructure for fossil fuels when we're supposed to leave them in the ground? In this area, in this era, when wind and solar create more, more jobs and are fiscally helpful, they preserve our planet. So I, I ask that we stay sand with science and sand with trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joyce Chapman, and I live in Shady Cove, Oregon, on the Rogue River, approximately two miles south of where Pembina proposes to cross under the Rogue River with a 36-inch pipe using horizontal directional drilling. For hundreds of families in Shady Cove, the Rogue River is the single source of water supply from the Rogue River through Highland Water. The rest of us use wells that need to be tested regularly for mercury and arsenic, which naturally occur in the soils in our area. Some residents move from wells to Highland Water because of either dry or contaminated wells. Going back to wells is not an option should the Rogue River become contaminated during the construction process. The exit area for the crossing is approximately 2,100 feet west of the Rogue, within a drainage basin that drains into the Rogue south of the crossing. Spillage of draining fluid, of drilling fluid or other contaminants would go directly into the Rogue, fouling the water. HDD under the Rogue River is fraught with danger to the drinking water and environment. Should spillage or a frac out occur, it's highly possible that mercury and/or arsenic in our soils would be stirred up and contaminate our Rogue River, killing fish and eliminating our single source of drinking water. I quote from page 102 of a February 12, 2015 letter from Oregon Governor John Kids, Howard of FERC, in which ODFW, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, says, quote, "Pipeline crossings using HDD or other subsurface methodologies can be expected to cause frac outs." ODFW was referencing their extensive experience with pipeline construction. Any frac out or spillage would be a disaster to hundreds of families and the drinking water of Shady Cove, Medford, Talon, Phoenix, and all the other cities you've heard from. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Come on in. Sir? The table that, that.
If you want to wait a second, I'm going to call some folks up, okay? Let's see, I've got five I can call up. I'm trying to mix it a little bit and make sure we respect our doctors. James Hein, Christina LaFever, Julie Caldwell, Nancy Nelson. You're Nancy. I already called you. Oh, boy. Del, Delky Tibbets? Did I pick that right? Delsey. All right. And I think one more after that. James Dahlman. All right. Thank you.
My name is Shad Vaughn. Me and my family own and operate a 40 acre livestock ranch out of Eagle Point, Oregon. We strongly oppose the Jordan Cove LNG pipeline for lots of reasons that you guys have heard tonight and many times. My personal story is a little bit different simply for the fact that these guys are trying to come in and take 50 foot by quarter mile of my property that me and my family have worked really hard for. I'm a retired veteran, Iraqi vet, and I come back to the States, bought this property for me and my family to live on and, and to enjoy. And after not wanting to sell the property to LNG for the, for an easement, we received letters saying that they were going to claim eminent domain on our property and take it from us, and we had no choice. This would not only hurt our property value, it hurt my kids. I got four babies. You know, we got trees on our place. We run cattle. We have steelhead and salmon that run through our creek and in our pond up into our property. There's just so much damage that this would cause, not just on our property alone, but on neighboring properties that are around us. Not to mention a quarter mile from our property is when it hits BLM. And right through there is where Medford Waters, Medford Water comes from. I mean, there's so many wrong places to do this. This is not, Southern Oregon is not one of the places for this to happen. It's just not feasible and it ain't right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah. Okay.
My name is Robert Hoop Crane, R-O-B-E-R-T-H-O-O-P-C-R-A-N-E. My people are from the Toluca area. I am a third generation union member, a business agent, and vice chair trustee for the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 701. I represent 4,000 members that live, work, hunt, fish, and play in our state. Our apprenticeship program is open to applicants from the entire state of Oregon. Successful apprenticeship applicants, wages start at $28 an hour with health pension plan and a raise every 1,000 hours. When these men and women journey out, they will have a skill set that will allow them to provide for their family with livable family wages, health benefits, and a great pension when they retire. The reason I want to fill the removal permit approved is during the 43 years I have been in the industry, I have watched the safety, quality of workmanship, and respect for landowners during these projects improve immensely. My second reason is my concern is also environmental. When the Fukushima disaster occurred in Japan, the country shut down all 54 nuclear units. Five are now back in service, leaving 43 still idle. Japan has invested in both coal and natural gas, allowing the country to cut back on crude oil and fuel oil power plants. Expanding gas-fired generator plants is the only viable large scale option in a nuclear-free Japan. The country has announced a massive renewable energy initiative to replace nuclear energy by 2030, so renewables will play a larger role. However, shutting down reactors still means a shift towards fossil fuel. Given the option of burning coal or a much cleaner burning natural gas, the environmentally responsible choice is natural gas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, come on in. Yep.
I am Nancy Nelson, N-A-N-C-Y-N-E-L-S-O-N. I am a natural-born citizen of the Constitution of the United States of America, a resident of Ashland, Oregon. May I remind you that this foreign corporation is not a citizen of the Constitution of the United States of America. Their own country, British Columbia, has denied them the pipeline and a terminal. Plus, in our nation, the states of Washington and California have denied it. And I am asking you to please deny the removal field permits for the Jordan Cove LNG project. It was the United States Navy that first alerted America to the rising sea waters, the warming of the ocean. Both poles are melting. The Titanic plates are slipping. We live in the rule, the ring of fire, and there is bound to be more volcanoes and earthquakes. If that terminal is shaken, it will be a ball of fire and Oregon will burn.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you. My name is James Hein. My last name is spelled H-E-I-N. I was born and a member of Oregon. I've lived here for 57 years. I'm a father with two daughters and one son and also three grandchildren, and we are 100% support of Jordan Cove Project. Thank you to the Creator for giving us clean natural energy like hydroelectric dams, LPG, and electricity from wood waste. And thanks to the native own Kukustawin Tribe, a confederation of 10 tribes and 3,600 members. If the pipe was to leak, and God forbid that whatever happened, they will turn it off and they'll make repairs. Here, the local buses operate on clean natural gas. Our garbage trucks also operate on clean burning recycled methane gas, and our local landfill, it also generates electricity for over 3,000 homes. If all vehicles were operated on LPG, there would be almost no greenhouse gases. In the local business, they operate forklifts indoors on clean burning LPG. If you were to operate the forklift indoors on gasoline or diesel, their exhaust indoors would be extremely dangerous. If there's a country that needs natural gas, it is China. They import 1.6 million tons of coal from North Korea just in the month of August to generate electricity. Businesses that create jobs and money and clean up trash in the forests and watersheds, that would be impossible to do without taxpayers' dollars. I want to thank the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 701 for the participation and support of the Jordan Cove Project, and including, Jordan Cove is good for the environment, not just here locally, but around the world. If we all operate on LPG gas, the world will be a much cleaner environment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, can you please come in? I'm going to call up four more people. Lois Hoffler, Sammy Goodwin, Vince Lizowski, and John Hoxley. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Christina LaFever, K-R-I-S-T-I-N-A, last name L-E-F as in Frank, E-V as in Veronica, E-R. I moved here to Southern Oregon from Georgia about six years ago. I love this place, as so many of the people in this room do. I would never move back to Georgia, and I'm proud to be here tonight. I'm asking you to please deny this pipeline. I'm also a member of the Oregon State Grange. The Oregon State Grange has more than 4,000 members in 275 granges throughout the state. In 218, sorry, in 2018, the Oregon State Grange passed a resolution at our Oregon State Grange Convention opposing the construction of the Jordan Cove LNG Facility Pacific Connector Pipeline. So I'm speaking for myself and the 4,000 members of the Oregon State Grange, asking the DSL to deny this project. We say no LNG pipeline for many reasons. We need our streams, trees, wildlife, and clean air much more than we need this pipeline. There are better ways to obtain energy, and Pembina knows it. I'm going to read really quickly a whereas, "The path of the proposed LNG pipeline would have had, would have long lasting and irreversible negative repercussions on farm, ranch, and forest lands, as well as natural rivers and streams used for drinking, irrigation, livestock, and other agricultural purposes." Resolve, "The Oregon State Grange stands in support of landowners, ranchers, farmers, and concerned citizens of Oregon who are opposing the permitting and acquisition of private property by eminent domain for construction of the Jordan Cove LNG Facility Pacific Connector Pipeline." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Julie Caldwell, J-U-L-I-E-C-A-L-D-W-E-L-L. I'm a, almost 40, next year will be 40-year resident of the Jackson County. I live in Ashland. I also am a member of the Bellevue Grange 759. I am a member of the Oregon State Grange. The Oregon State Grange has more than 4,000 members in 275 granges throughout the state and their families, including Coos Bay, of which there are four. 702 in Banden, number 730 in Bridge, number 834 Green Acres, and number 691 North Bayside. Not to mention the other granges along the pipeline route. My colleague said some of this, so I will just move to the whereas and the resolves to cede our time to others. Extraction and distribution of fossil fuels are a major source of pollution because such leaks put air and water at risk of becoming toxic and unsupportive of life, and the risk is unacceptable. Therefore, be it the grain, Oregon State Grange opposes the invocation of eminent domain for construction of the Jordan Cove LNG Facility Pacific Connector Pipeline in Oregon. And personally, I stand here for my four grandchildren, and my daughter, and my dad, who is 85, who also lives in this state. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, audience. Sir?
Hi. Hi. My name is Delsey Tibbets, D-E-L-C-Y-T-I-B-B-E-T-T-S. I am speaking in opposition to the proposed Jordan Cove pipeline. I've been a resident of rural Jackson County since 1977. I'm a mom, grandmother, aunt, and great aunt, as well as sister, niece, and partner to my husband of 39 years. I've worked in medical, health, and education administration throughout my career. I'm not a scientist or an expert on climate change and global weather. However, I do pay attention to media reports, read articles, and research papers in local and national publications related to the environment, particularly, particularly around the effects of climate change that is largely attributed to fossil fuel extraction and use. I'm distraught by the damage done to our planet from these extractions, by the impact on global communities, particularly on people of color and indigenous peoples, and especially missing and murdered indigenous women and girls. I'm fortunate to drive an electric vehicle and utilize rooftop solar energy at home and work. I do my part to the best of my ability to reduce my carbon footprint and encourage my family, friends, and colleagues to do likewise. I understand that the prospect of building this project is attractive to some in the local Coos Bay community. I empathize with those who want to improve the opportunities for development and employment in their communities, but at what expense? The risks involved in pipeline development and implementation appear to be much higher than any potential benefit to all but the corporations who benefit from the sale of this extractive fuel. I believe that as a nation, community, and world, we need to turn our consumption of extractive gas, oil, and coal fuels around and change quickly to clean renewables, wind, solar, and water energy sources for power. I want my children, grandchildren, and the generations to come after me to have a clean environment, clean power sources, and the beauty of nature to live in. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yep.
Go ahead. Okay. My name is James Dahlman. That's D-A-H-L-M-A-N. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. And I'm not long-winded. I just got a few important points to make, so you'll probably be happy. First of all, I strongly oppose the Jordan Cove liquid natural gas and Pacific Connector Pipeline project, proposed project. Specifically, I'm concerned about the following impacts: the loss of habitat on 485 water crossings. This pipeline will increase sediment in the streams, rivers, impacting fish. The discharge of pollutants from construction activities impacting clean water in Southern Oregon. This pipeline
This pipeline will damage over eight miles of wetland. 7.6 million cubic yards of material will be excavated from Oregon wetlands. Last, I would like to ask you and everyone in this room, what benefit is this pipeline for our beautiful state of Oregon? A foreign company wants to use eminent domain to take my land for corporate profit to sell the gas to Asia. I served four years of my life to protect the rights and freedoms of the United States of America, and not some foreign company that could just come along and steal my land. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, audience. Want to, you want to speak down? Ma'am, can you hang on? I'm going to go ahead and call some other people.
Sure.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to take Deb Evans, Margaret Robbins, Kylie Sorrell, I think so, and Daniel Frank. I'm going to get all of the tribal members that I see here all at once, and then we'll go back to our list. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Lois Heffler. That's H-O-E, double F as in Frank, L-E-R, and I live in Medford, Oregon. I strongly oppose the Jordan Cove liquefied natural gas LNG and Pacific Connector Pipeline proposed project because the proposed activities would likely harm Oregon's water resources, fishing, navigation, and public recreation, as well as increase the risk to public health and safety. Specifically, I am concerned about the following impacts. I am concerned about the impact of construction of the pipeline on drinking water. The construction of the pipeline will impact 485 waterways and cross tributaries to my local drinking water supply. Construction of the pipeline would increase sediment and turbidity, both of which may harm drinking water supplies. And construction of the pipeline will require blasting in some areas through solid rock to install the pipeline. Blasting can alter streams permanently where it occurs, increasing turbidity and dumping sediment into streams. I also visit Coos Bay for recreation. Part of the attraction of the Coos Bay is the oyster and other shellfish in the bay. The dredging activity associated with building a terminal will cause turbidity plumes and potentially stir up contaminated sediment from past industrial activity in Coos Bay estuary, and it would release, possibly release contaminants into the water that could enter the food chain and impact the livelihood of fishermen and the health of visitors like myself. I would like to note that tourism, retail, healthcare, and the Rogue Valley and other jobs employ many gray-haired people here. The impact of environmental destruction on this economy would impact the employment market for us gray and white hairs too, and we need jobs as well. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sammy Goodwin, S-A-M-M-I-G-O-O-D-W-Y-N. I am a California resident, but this also permit, I'm strongly opposed to this permit. I'm also strongly opposed to this pipeline. I'm from Northern California, and even though I'm not from Oregon, it does affect me. It affects me in many ways, as I'm indigenous people. It affects culture. It affects burial grounds. It affects the way that we have been raised and taught through tradition to live our life. I strongly oppose anything that comes into that way of thinking, that it is okay to devastate culture, that it is okay to bring harmful, not only harmful, but to one culture, but to many people, to all people in a sense. Water is life. We need water to live, but we need water to eat, we need water, in a sense, to breathe because it is from our trees. I want to go back to the importance of possibly going through a burial ground, a sacred burial ground, for tribal people. Like, we have our own religion, we have our own way of sending our people up, and for that to be disturbed is inhumane on many levels. I'm also very concerned with man camps, for I'm an indigenous woman, I'm young, and I also have daughters. And so, the thought of, you know, something so terrible happening to so many people, not just here, but throughout our country, is beyond, you know, like you can't imagine. But I have faith in the Creator as well, and I know the Creator has a plan for this. He has a way for us to, like, get together, to come together, to bring our tools and say, "No," because it's simple to say no. And I just ask the Creator to take that consideration for all. Thank you.
My name is Vince Zoski. Last name Z-A-U-S-K-E-Y. I live in Ashland, Oregon. Being an advocate for a healthy environment, I am concerned how the construction project for the Pacific Connector Pipeline near streams, creeks, wetlands, and particularly large rivers such as the Rogue River will have a devastating and permanent impact in our region. From the smallest creek leading to rivers, the quality of water, plus fish, birds, mammals, and entire living ecosystems that comprise the Rogue Basin will be compromised. It is my firm belief that blasting, trenching, road building, drilling chemicals, and human disturbance near feeder streams, wetlands, and rivers along the construction route will alter and destroy a myriad of living organisms for over 200 miles. In addition, the 90-foot clear-cut corridor required to maintain the pipeline's route will increase ground and water temperatures and be a source of erosion during Oregon's rain and snow seasons, as trees, vegetation, rocks, soils, and siltation will find their way into bodies of water. The Jordan Cove Pacific Connector Pipeline running from Alin to Coos Bay is the largest construction project ever proposed in Oregon by a foreign country, and in this case, it's Canada. No amount of money offered to landowners in impacted, and impacted counties can replace Oregon's clean water and air, natural beauty, sensitive fish species, wildlife, recreation, tourism, existing jobs, and the quality of life Oregonians depend on and cherish.
Is it pushed up? Yep. Go ahead. I'm John with an H, Hawksley, H-A-W-K-S-L-E-Y. I live in Ashland, Oregon, for the last 23 years. As I see it, there's no public good in a project that increases global warming and climate change. We're seeing the results of these changes in increased fire, smoke, and drier forests. Extreme winds are becoming more common, resulting in more extreme fires, such as the one that we had in Paradise. The ruling that you won't consider testimony related to global warming and climate change puzzles me, seems wrong. Methane is many times stronger as a greenhouse gas. Not considering this really seems hypocritical. I'm sure that extreme fires will increase the erosion and water, decrease water quality, as well as destroy homes, businesses, and kill people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Deb Evans, D-E-V-E-V-A-N-S. My husband and I are affected landowners on the Pacific Connector Gas Pipeline Route. We have been directly impacted by this project for more than 13 years now. As landowners and citizens of this state, we oppose this project and ask that DSL not approve this application. Our day-to-day is an emotional roller coaster because it affects property, whether public or privately owned, that is near and dear to our hearts and which will be harmed. What we want from DSL is to be heard, and that our state acknowledge that, what, acknowledge what the citizens of this state want, not what money from outside of our communities can buy. Last year, Policy Interactive ran a poll on Jordan Cove to see what the citizens of Oregon think about the project. When asked the question, "Which of these two statements comes closer to your view about the project?", 31% said, "It is desirable because of the jobs and economic growth," and 69% said, "It is undesirable because of private property rights and environmental impacts." These opinions matter to us, and we want them to matter to you. Part of what has made Oregon the beautiful state that it is was the conviction and effort of former Republican Governor Tom McCall, who in his address to the Oregon Legislature in 1973 said, "The interests of Oregon for today and in the future must be protected from the grasping wastrels of the land. We must respect another truism, that unlimited and unregulated growth leads inexorably to a lower quality of life." To bring Governor McCall's words into today's context, development of fossil fuel infrastructure threatens our quality of life and hastens our demise via climate change impacts, and it flies in the face of Hippocratic Oath, "First, do no harm." Thank you.
Do you have a member on the list? Okay. We're getting there. It's 7:25. And I'm not going to be able to actually track this, so I'm doing my best I can to get the auditors as well as to get others. I see that there is, I'm looking at the list, there's an affected landowner that I wanted to make sure they were heard from. Where do I see that? Affected landowner Darrell Ackley. Please come forward. And then I'm going to take Regina, oh, yeah, she represents the Pacific Coast Federation of Fishermen's, so, and, I can't do this one. Priscilla Estonia, Vivian Tower, and I think that's all I can do. Okay. Thank you.
I equate, nicked now Margaret Robbins, M-A-R-G-A-R-E-T-R-O-B-B-I-N-S. Ketchnak and enrolled Euro tribal member. I live on the Lower Clamath River. I strongly oppose the pipeline and terminal as they'd be very detrimental to the salmon fisheries. The clear cut along the pipeline's course will cause erosion to the waterways, and lack of shade will increase water temperatures. Salmon cannot survive if water temperatures raise anymore. They are barely surviving now. As native people, we depend on salmon as a mainstay of our diet. Although the proposed pipeline crossing is in Oregon, it would affect those of us living on the Clamath River in California as well. The proposed export facility would also damage fish habitat along the coast. It could potentially destroy the ocean fishery on the north coast should there be a gas spill or explosion. The pipeline and terminal would only benefit industry tied to the energy company. It poses grave threats to the water and people along the pipeline route and downstream from the crossings. The other Upper Clamath Basin tribes are on the verge of having salmon in their waters again. Should the salmon come back, only to be destroyed by a pipeline leak? This pipeline is not good by any stretch of the imagination. In addition to the poke, the threat to the water that it poses, the pipeline could also cause an uncontrollable wildfire if it leaks. It is going through a lot of dry timberlands that if the, if it leaks, it would be uncontrollable. I respectfully request the Oregon State Land Board to do the right thing, deny the permit. It is not in the best interest of the people or the environment.
Thank you, Ms. Robbins, and I want to let you know that the Land Board will not be making a decision on this. This is a decision that ID is the director of the department. Thank you.
My name is Danielle Frank, D-A-N-I-E-L-L-E-F-R-A-N-K. I'm a member of the Hoopa Tribe, and I'm a sophomore at Hoopa Valley, Hoopa Valley High School in Northern California. I live on the Trinity River, which flows into the Clamath. I'm here with a group from my community because we know, along with many of you, that nothing good can come from this pipeline. This pipeline affects my community in many different ways. We live on a small reservation, as I previously stated, and the river is one of the most important parts of our home. We use it in countless ways for countless things, such as recreational use, cultural ceremonies, a food source, et cetera. The Trinity is the name of our river, and it runs into the Clamath, meaning if a disaster were to occur, it would affect both of the rivers, among the others, among many others. This pipeline threatens our river's very existence, which is one of the reasons we are here. I don't want to live in a world, and more importantly, I don't want my children to have to live in a world without that river or any of the other waterways this pipeline will affect. This is just my personal story, and I'm sure 90% of the other people in this room and outside have stories just like mine, which is why I'm here asking DSL to do the right thing and deny this permit.
Thank you. Thank you. Danielle? Go ahead and come on up.
Hi, my name is Kylie Sorrell, K-Y-L-E-S-O-R-R-E-L-L. I'm from Hoopa, California, and I'm a freshman from Hoopa High. The Trinity River runs through my reservation, which connects to the Clamath River, and the pipeline export faculty threatens my tribe, along with many others. I think it's sad, truly sad, that we never learned from the North Dakota Pipeline. The North Dakota Pipeline leaked. Every pipeline leaks. We all know that. Think of the environment, think of the trees, think of the water, think of the fish, the wildlife, but most importantly, think of the youth. And we're the next generation that will be dealing with this. People were talking about their kids calling jobs. Yeah, let me think, because I know so many, me and my tribal members, love to work as employee, be a employee of the job that hurts our earth. What would we be able to pursue if the environment is so destroyed and the water is so poisoned? We ruin, we ruin this planet, we ruin this planet like we have, we have another one to go to. I don't think so. DSL, do the right thing, deny the permit. If not for these people that are sitting here wanting, wanting it, then do it for the next generation and the generations to come, because truly, I don't want to live in a world where it's polluted. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on just one minute. Please. Slowly making.
K-Y-L-E-E-F.
Yes. S-O-R-R-E-L-L. All right. Go ahead and give him the, ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. Thank you. Go ahead and do your testimony, sir. Make sure you spell your name for us.
Okay. My name is Darrell Ackley, D-A-R-Y-L-A-C-K-L-E-Y. I am an, I'm opposed to the project. I'm an affected landowner. The construction road for the project will go within, will cross our property, and I believe it'll go within 100 yards of endangered plant species we have there, besides the issues with our, our well and other things. But I'm also a business owner. I have an agency. I get jobs for people with disabilities, and I am a former union person for 35 years. I was assistant district director. So I support our brothers and sisters who may be in favor of this for jobs, but the thing that is most important, I think, besides all the environmental issues, is the fact that this is not a national emergency, and I believe that seizing property for profit for a foreign corporation, no one, no American and no Oregonian can support this for that very reason, along with any other reasons. So, the negative effects. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ma'am, if you could just hold on for a second, I'm going to call up, we're getting close in. Marna, I can't remember her last name or her tribe number. Please come forward. Philip Holbar, Donna Rebo, Gary Jackson, and Carol Cate.
Hello, my name is Regina Chizola, Chizola, C-H-I, C-H-I again, C-O-L-A. I am here today for a group called Save California Salmon, and also the Pacific Coast Federation of Fishermen's Association, which is the largest trade union for commercial fishermen in the western United States. We are opposed to the Jordan Cove Project and the Pacific Coast, and the Pacific Connector Pipeline because of the extreme effects it'll have on commercial fisheries and on tribal people. Yesterday, someone said that if just one tribe opposes this project, then it should not go forward. Well, at least four tribes up and down the Clamath River do, as does many people within the commercial fisher industry, which has lost about three-quarters of its fleet at least just within the last 20 years due to river pollution and global warming. We recently fired, the Fishing Union recently filed a lawsuit against the oil industry for destroying our crab, crab jobs, which have replaced our salmon jobs. We recently fired, the fishing union recently filed a lawsuit against the oil industry for destroying our crab jobs, which have replaced our salmon jobs as more and more of the rivers are going down. Right now, I live in California, and right now, over fifty percent of the species of salmon in California are facing extinction within fifty years, and along with the majority of our water supply. As global warming gets worse, more and more of our water is unusable, and the industries are going down as is the ability of other people to drink clean water. I also want to say that I've also worked to remove the Clamath dams now for fifteen years. The Clamath River has extreme water quality issues, and the Kino Reservoir is going to be the area that provides the hardest time, hardest place for the salmon to survive after dam removal. So if salmon are going to go back to the upper basin of the Clamath River, we need to make sure that there are not more cumulative impacts to the Clamath River within this area. So we oppose this project, we oppose more projects related to global warming, and we are also united with all the fishermen and unions that are impacted by climate change, and we are an important union also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyway, go ahead.
So my name is Priscilla España, P-R-I-S-C-I-L-A, last name E-S-P-A-N-A, and I'm here with Royal Climate, and I'm a senior at Phoenix High School here in Southern Oregon. What concerns me most about Jordan Cove is the detrimental effects that it would have on climate change and consequently on our environment and home. If put into place, the Jordan Cove LNG project would be the largest source of carbon emissions in the entire state of Oregon. We've already seen how summer after summer, the Rogue Valley air fills with smoke fires because of surrounding wildfires. The reality is that we don't need any more pollutants in our air, and Jordan Cove would just contribute to our already horrifying summers. A few months from now, I'll be leaving for college, and when I come back, I don't want to be coming back to a home where I can't breathe the air or drink water from my tap water. And so DSL, I urge you, for my future and that of others, to please deny these permits. There is no place for Jordan Cove and its devastating effects in my home. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Vivian Tauer, V-I-V-I-A-N-T-A-U-E-R. I'm a senior at Phoenix High School in Southern Oregon. Among the many tremendous impacts that the Jordan Cove Project and Pipeline would have upon our communities, the degradation of our waterways is certain and concerning. I enjoy recreation along many of the impacted waterways, and recreation, as well as our appreciated environment, are in jeopardy because Jordan Cove has failed to demonstrate that this project is consistent with the protection, conservation, and best uses of Oregon's waters. Of every of the four hundred and eighty-five waterways crossed, the recreational uses, climate, and wildlife are threatened by the installation of the pipeline, and the increased sediment pollution at stream crossings by the seventy-five-foot-three buffer around each stream crossing. The construction of the terminal, the pipeline, and related facilities will significantly degrade our river's streams. I urge DSL to deny the removal fill permit for this project because Jordan Cove has failed to demonstrate that it is consistent with Oregon's removal fill statute. Thank you.
My name is Thomas Joseph. I'm a relative of the Valley Tribe of Northern California, and I like to, my last name J-O-S-E-P-H, first name T-H-O-M-A-S. And I would like to recognize the indigenous peoples of the Takilma and Shasta, which is the lands, the ancestral lands of which we live on. I'd also like to urge the state of Oregon to change its direction towards the maintenance and care of our ancestral lands here in this region, in this part of the region, as we're moving towards to celebrate the hundred and sixtieth anniversary of the state of Oregon this coming Valentine's Day. Our, the indigenous peoples of this region and of this area have seen the continual destruction that the state of Oregon has committed upon our ancestral lands, with the damming of our rivers, with the warming of our streams, and the continual deforestation of our ancestral territories. The state of Oregon has implemented a vast colonialization and genocide of our species pertaining besides human species of our streams and of our forests, and we're asking the state of Oregon to take a massive change of direction to support the ideals and values of Californians that have now grown to love their ancestral lands as well up here in Oregon. And so, at this moment, I've been noticed in twenty-minute time. At this moment, I'd also like to recognize all the missing and endangered indigenous women that have been the subject because of pipelines, and so for the next twenty seconds, I'd like to ask for sign-ups to recognize those fallen sisters. I personally ask you to deny the claims for the Jordan Cove Project and the LNG Project. It's going to continue to raise havoc against the indigenous people that have lived here for thousands and thousands of years, as well as the new settlers that are here to enjoy the ancestral lands of this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. I really appreciate it. Come on ahead, and circle ahead.
My name is Philip Calvard, P-H-I-L-I-P-C-L-L-V-A-R-D, and I live in Medford, Oregon, and I have a BS in Wildlife Management from Oregon State, and I worked for the federal and private companies doing wildlife surveys, land surveys, cultural resource surveys, timber surveys, and worked as a firefighter. So I have a unique perspective on all of the complications that come in with this project. Ecological impacts, including threatening more than four hundred rivers and streams in the Coos Bay estuary. The window for construction of parts of this project are during fire seasons. What raises the risk of catastrophic forest fires similar to the ones in California where PG&E is considering bankruptcy because of fires caused by their infrastructure? What funding is available to mitigate potential fire disasters on that scale? This will create the single largest source of climate pollution in Oregon. It places a major export terminal in a tsunami zone near a population center. The mitigation plan for the project, which only includes a wetland project at the Kentucky area near Coos Bay, is woefully inadequate. Societal impacts include private jobs will be negatively impacted, whether it is tourism, fisheries, recreation, et cetera. Tribally sensitive areas may be negatively impacted. Global warming will be increased. It will raise domestic energy prices by exporting energy. Allows condemnation of private property by a corporation, foreign corporation for private gain. Will impact the southwest regional air corridor, which is right adjacent to the project, which could include small plane accidents, airspace restrictions, and possible drone or terrorist attacks. Will impact major shipping lanes through Coos Bay, which is a major port. What is the contingency to pay for the potential loss of water for over a hundred and fifty thousand Oregonians in twelve public water systems? Last and not least, the ads being broadcast continuously on local TV stations by Pembina for local job creation are ridiculously overblown. Most of the jobs will be temporary and filled by out-of-area specialized workers like pipe fitters. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, audience, for getting close to the end. Can you hold on just a moment there?
Thank you. We have seven minutes. I'm going to call up two more folks. I'd like to give those to tribal members. Nicole Mendoza, and I believe there is another tribal member that I can't read the name of. Her name also being Mendoza. My, Mahal Forendo. Okay. So we're going to hear from the tribal members.
Okay.
Thank you. Please go.
My name is Donna Greedlove, that's D-O-N-N-A, Greedlove, B-R-E-E-D-L-O-V-E, and I live in Medford, Oregon. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Rogue Valley, and I speak on their behalf. The League of Women Voters is a grassroots, nonpartisan political organization that engages informed and active participation in government on the basis of our opposition to preserve the physical, chemical, and biological integrity of our ecosystem with maximum protection of public health and the environment. Along others, all four local leagues in Oregon, from Maylin to Coos Bay, oppose the Jordan Cove LNG Export Pipeline Project. We will submit a joint substantive comment later. The Rogue Valley League speaks today to urge the DSL and deny the project's application for a removal fill permit. We will focus on the risks to public health and safety proposed by this pipeline and removal of fill activities during fire season. This removal fill permit is required for pipeline construction activities across almost four hundred water bodies, including around eighty in Jackson County alone. Oregon law requires the director of Walker to consider in-water activity in terms of protection of safe waters and potential interference with public health and safety. We find that planned pipeline removal fill schedule and activities combined to conflict with this statutory provision. To comply with other state laws and obtain other agency approvals, the company has agreed to do work at almost all water crossings within ODFs, fisheries, construction windows, time parameters set to minimize harm to fish from dredging, remove, fill, and blasting. Across the major majority of those routes, those windows coincide with our fire season. So what would pipeline installation activities entail? Removal, fill, and other activities that pose wildfire risks across far beyond those that we have already overwhelmed by, from start to finish, work crews with utilized chainsaws and other types of fire-producing equipment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Greedlove. Thank you. And we'll have to stand. You push a button? No, you don't have to push anything, just make sure it's close to you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Kaping, that's C-A-R-O-L-K-A-P-I-N-G. And I am a retired civil engineer, tech from Forest Service, and I oppose the LNG permit. And I first want to say that I'm humbled and honored to be here. And I would like to recognize all the native tribal people that are here, for they look at future generations, for seven generations, and that these projects are sustainable. I would also like to recognize all people that realize that we can't maintain this level of degradation to our lands and our waterways. We depend on clean water for ourselves, but also our fish and all of life, because we know that all of life is equally created and is sacred and has the right to live. As a Forest Service employee, I worked on roads and trails and recreational sites, and I can guarantee that no matter how many mitigations, and I used willows and rocky knell crops, and I moved a lot of field dirt, that degradation will happen, and I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about our clean water. And when I was seven, my father worked Sandy Laps, and they, I would go to open houses with renewable energy. Now, the sad thing is, that's fifty-three years ago, they had to scrap all of the projects because fossil fuels lobbied and didn't know how they'd get money from those projects. And I think after fifty-three years, we can go a higher, better spiritual route. Thank you.
Any man? Come forward, please, and these are our last two speakers.
Hello, my name is Nicole Mendoza, N-I-C-O-L-E-M-B-N-D-O-Z-A. I am an opposition of the LNG Pipeline. This pipeline will destroy my tribal cultural lands where our children learn, grow, and play. First, I'm a mother. I have my four-month-old child here today, and she's been so good. We live in the Rogue Valley, my husband and I, and my daughter. In this community, I'm a holistic nurse practitioner. I'm also part of the Coos Millup Tribe of Coos Bay. I'm kind of nervous. I'm our tribe's camp nurse and our nurse practitioner, and I'm also a weaver. I brought my basket here today that I made for my daughter. I oppose the LNG Pipeline because it will directly affect my native burial grounds and our historical gardens for gathering weeping materials. If LNG is not stopped, it will impact my daughter and generations to come, destroying what's left of our cultural heritage. I think the creator, that my ancestors survived so that I could speak here today. Thank you.
Hello again, Malaya Forendo, M-A-H-L-I-J-A-F-L-O-R-E-N-D-O, and I'm coming from Orleans, California. I quee. Before I continue, I want to acknowledge the tribes, which is the Takalma, who land we're occupying today. I'm here with Save California Salmon, and I come from the Wasco and Celeste Tribes of Oregon. I also come from the Urok and Kuddig Tribes of Northern California, who are both dependent on the Clamath River. I am also here in solidarity with the other rivers and people of those rivers who will be affected by this project. Our rivers have been through so much, as have the people who have been fighting just to survive, because of the destruction of these rivers. I specifically come from the Lower Clamath Basin, and in the past few years, our salmon numbers have dropped exponentially. Alongside that, one of the tribes in our area had one of the highest suicide rates in Indian country and the highest in California at the time. I use this as an example because I have never considered this a coincidence, that our people are suffering alongside this river. This project will bring only more destruction to the waterways it will cross. It will bring destruction to our climate, to the safety of indigenous women who will be in danger of man camps, destruction to indigenous food sources, tools and materials, and ceremonial practices, which is genocide on indigenous people, and the destruction to human life. You will never truly understand how this will affect indigenous people. Even most indigenous people don't fully recognize genocide until their homes start disappearing and their loved ones start dying around them. Those indigenous people who are fighting here for the land and their people, and those who are fighting elsewhere for the land and their people, literally have been all affected by the genocide of dams, aversions, and pipelines in some way. So I'm here today, again in front of you, as one of those people, to ask the Department of State Lands to oppose this project. The idea of this project has been going on for a long time, and my mother has fought this project in the past. I'm here fighting this project, and I just, I don't want to see my babies fighting this project or being affected by this project. So walk by. Thank you.
If you'd like to applause, maybe. Thank you. I've been here quite a long time, and I want to thank you for being our respectful audience. We have a couple situations that we need to deal with, but by and large, we're a respectful audience. Can you give us a couple points before we leave? The information you gave tonight will all be reviewed in the process of review and application. If you have further comments, if you would like to reply, please send them to us by email, mail, or fax, or leave a comment table in the back. This is the most important thing for you all to remember. The comment deadline is February third, 2019, at five p.m. Anything received after that time will not be considered, and I cannot, I cannot change that timeline. So please, get your comments in. Thank you again for your time. We'll be in Cannon Hill tomorrow. The public hearing is now closed.
Ma'am, thank you so much for your time. Thank you. Continuously on local TV stations by Pembina for local job creation are ridiculously overblown. Most of the jobs will be temporary and filled by out-of-area specialized workers like pipe fitters. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, audience, for getting close to the end. Can you hold on just a moment there?
Thank you. We have seven minutes. I'm going to call up two more folks. I'd like to give those to tribal members. Nicole Mendoza, and I believe there is another tribal member that I can't read the name of. Her name also being Mendoza. My, Mahal Forendo. Okay. So we're going to hear from the tribal members.
Okay.
Thank you. Please go.
My name is Donna Greedlove, that's D-O-N-N-A, Greedlove, B-R-E-E-D-L-O-V-E, and I live in Medford, Oregon. I am a I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Rogue Valley, and I speak on their behalf. The League of Women Voters is a grassroots, nonpartisan political organization that engages informed and active participation in government on the basis of our opposition to preserve the physical, chemical, and biological integrity of our ecosystem with maximum protection of public health and the environment. Along others, all four local leagues in Oregon, from Maylin to Coos Bay, oppose the Jordan Cove LNG export pipeline project. We will submit a joint substantive comment later. The Rogue Valley League speaks today to urge the DSL and deny the project's application for a removal fill permit. We will focus on the risks to public health and safety proposed by this pipeline and removal of fill activities during fire season. This removal fill permit is required for pipeline construction activities across almost 400 water, bottle, water bodies, including around 80 in Jackson County alone. Oregon law requires the director walker to consider in-water activity in terms of protection of safe waters and potential interference with public health and safety. We find that planned pipeline removal fill schedule and activities combined to conflict with this statutory provision. To comply with other state laws and obtain other agency approvals, the company has agreed to do work at almost all water crossings within ODFs, fisheries, construction windows, time parameters set to minimize harm to fish from dredging, remove, fill, and blasting. Across the major majority of those routes, those windows coincide with our fire season. So what would pipeline installation activities entail? Removal, fill, and other activities that pose wildlife risk, wildfire risks across far beyond those that we have already overwhelmed by from start to finish work crews with utilized chainsaws and other types of fire-producing equipment.
Thank you, Ms. Greedlove. Thank you. Go ahead. And who am I going to say? Do you push a button? No, you don't have to push anything, just make sure it's closed. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Kapin, that's C-A-R-O-L-K-A-P-I-N-G, and I am a retired civil engineer tech from Forest Service, and I oppose the LNG permit. And I first want to say that I'm humbled and honored to be here. And I would like to recognize all the native tribal people that are here, for they look at future generations, for seven generations, and that these projects are sustainable. I would also like to recognize all people that realize that we can't maintain this level of degradation to our lands and our waterways. We depend on clean water for ourselves, but also our fish and all of life, because we know that all of life is equally created and is sacred and has the right to live. As Forest Service employee, I worked on roads and trails and recreational sites, and I can guarantee that no matter how many mitigations, and I used willows and rocky now crops, and I moved a lot of field dirt, that degradation will happen, and I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about our clean water. And when I was seven, my father worked sandia laps, and they, I would go to open houses with renewable energy. Now, the sad thing is, that's 53 years ago, they had to scrap all of the projects because fossil fuels lobbied and didn't know how they'd get money from those projects. And I think after 53 years, we can go a higher, better spiritual route. Thank you.
Any ma'am, come forward, please. These are our last two speakers.
Hello. My name is Nicole Mendoza, N-I-C-O-L-E-M-E-N-D-O-Z-A. I am in opposition of the LNG pipeline. This pipeline will destroy my tribal cultural lands where our children learn, grow, and play. First, I'm a mother. I have my four-month-old child here today, and she's been so good. We live in the Rogue Valley, my husband and I, and my daughter. In this community, I'm a holistic nurse practitioner. I'm also part of the Coos Millup Tribe of Coos Bay. I'm kind of nervous. I'm our tribe's camp nurse and our nurse practitioner, and I'm also a weaver. I brought my basket here today that I made for my daughter. I oppose the LNG pipeline because it will directly affect my native burial grounds and our historical gardens for gathering weeping materials.
If LNG is not stopped, it will impact my daughter and generations to come, destroying what's left of our cultural heritage. I think the Creator, that my ancestors survived so that I could speak here today. Thank you.
Hello again, Malaya Ferendo, M-A-H-L-I-J-A-F-L-O-R-E-N-D-O, and I'm coming from Orleans, California. I agree. Before I continue, I want to acknowledge the tribes such as the Takalma, who land we're occupying today. I'm here with Save California Salmon, and I come from the Wasco and Celeste Tribes of Oregon. I also come from the Urok and Kuddig Tribes of Northern California, who are both dependent on the Clamath River. I am also here in solidarity with the other rivers and people of those rivers who will be affected by this project. Our rivers have been through so much, as have the people who have been fighting just to survive, because of the destruction of these rivers. I specifically come from the lower Clamath Basin, and in the past few years, our salmon numbers have dropped exponentially. Alongside that, one of the tribes in our area had one of the highest suicide rates in Indian country and the highest in California at the time. I use this as an example because I have never considered this a coincidence that our people are suffering alongside this river. This project will bring only more destruction to the waterways it will cross. It will bring destruction to our climate, to the safety of indigenous women who will be in danger of man camps, destruction to indigenous food sources, tools and materials, and ceremonial practices, which is genocide on indigenous people and the destruction to human life. You will never truly understand how this will affect indigenous people. Even most indigenous people don't fully recognize genocide until their homes start disappearing and their loved ones start dying around them. Those indigenous people who are fighting here for the land and their people, and those who are fighting elsewhere for the land and their people, literally have been all affected by the genocide of dams, aversions, and pipelines in some way. So I'm here today again in front of you as one of those people to ask the Department of State Lands to oppose this project. The idea of this project has been going on for a long time, and my mother has fought this project in the past. I'm here fighting this project, and I just, I don't want to see my babies fighting this project or being affected by this project. So walk away. Thank you.
If you'd like to applause, maybe. [applause] Thank you. I've been here quite a long time, and I wanted to thank you for being a respectful audience. We had a couple situations that we needed to deal with, but by and large, we're a respectful audience. Can you give us a couple points before we leave? Any information you gave tonight will all be reviewed in the process of reviewing this application. If you have further comments that you would like to provide, please send them to us by email, mail, or fax, or leave them in the comment table in the back. This is the most important thing for you all to remember. The comment deadline is February 3, 2019, at 5:00 p.m. Anything received after that time will not be considered, and I cannot, I cannot change that timeline. So please, get your comments in. Thank you again for your time. We'll be in Cannon Hill tomorrow. The public hearing is now closed.
Ma'am, thank you so much for your time. God bless you, turkey.
Please send them to us by email, mail, or fax, or leave them in the comment table in the back. This is the most important thing for you all to remember. The comment deadline is February 3, 2019, at 5:00 p.m. Anything received after that time will not be considered, and I cannot, I cannot change that timeline. So please, get your comments in. Thank you again for your time. We'll be in Cannon Hill tomorrow. The public hearing is now closed.
Ma'am, thank you so much for your time.